May I have a motion to open the meeting? Moved by Commissioner Berkeley. Seconded by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor? Meeting is officially opened. Welcome, everyone, to the 9-0 approved to open the meeting. Welcome, everyone, to the Special Public Board Meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. I would like to... Now that we've called to order, we should rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comments are brief. I want to thank everybody, all the members of the public, the school communities, for participating in this process over the last couple of months. This is not an easy process for anybody, but it... I've personally greatly appreciated the chance to participate and to be engaged with so many amazing people in the city of Baltimore who care a lot about kids. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Santalisis.
Thank you, Board Chair Kashani, and to the full Board of Commissioners, as well as to the public that is here this evening. I want to open our meeting this evening dedicated to a vote on portfolio recommendations by thanking everyone who participated in this very important process. We heard powerful and important testimony, both orally and in writing, from community partners, elected officials, teachers, parents, and, most importantly, our students. The voices of each of you, particularly those of students, have influenced my thinking for each school considered tonight. I believe this is true for the Board as well. While I don't know what the outcome of the Board's decisions will be, I know that we are all led by a commitment to each student and each family to improve our schools and increase, not limit, opportunities for student growth and access to rich, quality programs. Based on the testimony of the partners and parents of William Penderhughes, and, most particularly, of William Penderhughes' students, I have decided to defer the vote and instead have staff work with the community to create an education plan for a single, sustainable, high-quality program for the Sandtown community. It was the powerful testimony of young people who most influenced my thinking, and I look forward to working with the community to re-envision what education can and should look like in the Sandtown community for the years to come and over the next year of planning. For other school communities, the youth voice was equally powerful. While my ultimate recommendation may not have changed, should the Board approve these recommendations, my directions to staff reflect the need to ensure that the concerns of students are addressed and that each student is handled with care and left whole by this process. While broad community input has always been an important pillar of the process, I have heard and agree that we, Baltimore City Public Schools, need to refine the process further to ensure that opportunities for community voice, partnership, and input happen earlier in order to create a process that truly recognizes the partnership and shared responsibility we all have for our schools. Our schools belong to all of us, and it is through working together around difficult challenges that we will transform what education in Baltimore looks like and co-create a school system that each of us is proud of and that addresses the needs for this coming generation of Baltimore's leaders. Thank you, and I turn it back over to Chair Kashani.
In addition to the deferral of the vote on William Penderhughes, I just want to note there are two... As posted in Board Docs, there are two other deferrals. We're delaying the vote on the Banneker Blake Academy for Arts and Sciences. We're waiting on some additional information from that school. And we are also delaying the vote on the grade configuration for Lois T. Murray. Again, the information is in Board Docs, so there won't be any further discussion of those schools tonight. So with that, I want to turn to Angela, please. And we beg your patience with the process. There's a very defined... It's a very defined process that we have to follow. You'll pick up on that fairly quickly. So Angela, turn it over to you. We'll start with Dr. Carter G. Woodson, Elementary-Middle School.
Here's a couple upfront slides. So just to remind people that the portfolio review is part of the kind of portfolio model at city schools. We talked a bit about this on the opening night. Just wanted to remind people that's there, and certain things that we have in place are related to that, like per pupil funding, school choice, et cetera. The annual look at schools considers a range of factors: academic performance, climate indicators, access and quality, and distribution of school programming, school enrollment and size, building utilization, the 21st Century Plan, and the renewal framework for operator schools. This slide just kind of goes into how we're trying to ensure that there's proportionate investment in communities. So it's looking at how we use both CIP and 21st Century Funds to improve school buildings, and it shows a proportionate share. So if you want more information, that's on Slide 4. This is about access to gifted advanced learning sites. Our academic office has worked intentionally to increase that access to students throughout the city, and we're continuing to look at that as a school system. Just going to skip. There are a couple of slides that talk about some of the new facilities that opened this year, Fort Worthington and Frederick. The particular areas of focus for this year's portfolio process are really around making sure that schools were sustainable in terms of their size and really able to offer that robust programming. That's important. And also looking at the quality of programs and access to programs, as well as the 21st Century Plan. There are a number of recommendations up before the Board tonight. There are two that are mentioned in this upfront slide around grade configuration that were pre-approved on October 10th. They're noted in the portfolio book. That's people from members of the public. You can find it online. But this is just a summary of the recommendations. In the interest of time, just going to skip to kind of get to where we're trying to go. Commissioner Kashani mentioned we have a deferral in the operator renewal section for Banneker Blake. We're waiting for an audit, so that will come for a vote on January 23rd, 2018. So the second meeting in January. We also deferred the vote on Lois T. Murray. So the original recommendation is around the change of grade configuration for students starting in 1819. Based on community input, staff is working with the Barter community to ensure that, one, we really are thinking intentionally around transition planning, and we're also considering whether or not it still makes sense to do that grade configuration. So we'll talk more about that in January. Some of the details can be found on Slide 15, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. And then William Penderhughes, as Dr. Santalisis mentioned at the beginning, we are working with the school community around creating a vision for what education could look like in Sandtown. So since that, we're continuing to work. We're going to have the Board postpone a vote around the two communities until January 23rd, 2018. We need to do some additional engagement with the Gilmore side of that community, and so there will be a vote. There still will be a year to work together between that, but the Board will take a vote similar to what it did with Cherry Hill around closure of one program. But we want it timed to further engage the community to make sure both are equally aware of this promise and commitment to do a year around planning and so that when we take the... When the Board takes an action on January 23rd, people are aware of what it means and how it connects to this longer process that we'll do over the year. So I just wanted to make sure that that was all on the record. So for Dr. Carter G. Woodson, this is kind of pursuant to the 21st Century Plan. So the recommendation is to close the program in the summer of 2018 and surplus the building in the summer of 2020. We plan to use the facility for swing space for other schools that need it in the 21st Century Plan. The students in that... If the Board approves this, the students in that community will be able to attend Arundel for grades pre-K through 2nd or Cherry Hill for grades 3 through 8. Both of those schools will open this fall, 2018. And so I'm getting ready to get into a script. Just for members of the public, there are certain things that we have to say on the record. The script allows the Board to reject, modify, to do all sorts of things. But it's just certain it's going to sound a little bit robotic. It's just certain key things that we have to make sure are clearly laid out. And so you'll hear kind of similar language, but the Board has full freedom to do what they need to do. The Code of Maryland Regulations, or COMAR, requires that local Boards of Education ensure at a minimum that consideration is given to the impact of a proposed closure on the following eight factors: student enrollment trends, age or condition of school buildings, transportation, educational programs, racial composition of the student body, financial considerations, student relocation, impact on community and geographic attendance area where the school proposed to be closed and schools or schools to which students will be relocating. For each of tonight's closure and relocation recommendations, including building surpluses of traditional public schools, the Board has received data regarding each of the eight COMAR factors. The schools are Blueford Drew Jameson STEM Academy West, Coldstream Park Elementary Middle, Dr. Carter G. Woodson Elementary Middle, Friendship Academy of Engineering and Technology, Knowledge and Success Academy, Ragno Heights Elementary Middle School, and the Stadium School. Additionally, there are four buildings to be surplus: Patapsico, West Side, Ragno Heights, and the Ragno Heights Buildings at the end of the year, and Dr. Carter G. Woodson with a proposed effective date of 2020. So now focusing on Dr. Carter G. Woodson in particular. Based on the consideration of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at the Board's special session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMAR factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that Dr. Carter G. Woodson Elementary Middle School Program close effective summer 2018. The Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School and Arundel Elementary School Zones will be expanded to include the former Dr. Carter G. Woodson Zone. The building will be effective with a... Be surplus effective 2020 and that the 21st Century Buildings Plan be amended to reflect this new surplus date.
Oh, sorry. I concur with the recommendations as stated.
I'd like to ask Board members if they have any questions as to the merits of the recommendation. Hearing none. Commissioner Highcupboard, can we have a motion?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued November 14th, testimony given at special session and public hearing, and the contents of the official record and the eight COMAR factors, that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Canem, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Vote 9 to 0 to support the recommendation.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I was interrupted. Who seconded that?
Commissioner Cooper.
Commissioner Cooper, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next school program they're going to talk about is Coldstream Park Elementary Middle School. The recommendation is that the program close in the summer of 2018. This is a program... And there are a variety of factors that drove this recommendation. There hasn't been strong outcomes for students in terms of state assessments and attendance. There's been insufficient enrollment to provide the robust programming that students deserve. Enrollment has dropped over time. And nearby, there are programs that have had... Are more successful, Stadium and Abiston. And so if this is approved, the elementary students who are currently zoned to Coldstream Park will be zoned to Abiston. There's a later... Later in the deck, there's a recommendation to move Stadium into the Coldstream Park Building if the Board approves this action. And then Stadium would be the designated feeder program for students living in the area if they're approved... If the Board approves this. So based on the considerations of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the content of the official record, and the eight COMAR factors listed earlier this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that Coldstream Park Elementary Middle School Program close effective 2018 and that the Board approve the expansion of the Abiston Elementary School Zone to include the former Coldstream Park Zone.
I concur with the recommendations as stated.
Do any Board members have any questions for discussion on the merits of the proposal?
I sent a question last night. I don't have it in front of me, but Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark had asked that if the school was going to be closed, that the district takes certain steps. I'm curious if the district has a response to her requests.
So we're still working on responses. There are questions about the job fair and the ways we're going to address, you know, teachers who are impacted by this. So we still haven't provided a written response yet. We do typically meet individually with schools when the... With the staff at schools when there's a decision like this. And we do often hold, you know, sessions for those teachers, but we haven't provided a written response to Councilwoman Clark yet.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Highcupboard, do we have a motion?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the portfolio review issued report... I'm sorry. Issue on November 14th, testimony given at special session and public hearing, the contents of the official record, the eight COMAR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Move by Commissioner Highcupboard, seconded by Commissioner Hassan. All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Canem, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. 9 to 0. Recommendation is approved.
So Friendship Academy of Engineering and Technology, the recommendation is that the program close summer 2018 and that we retain the facility for future use. The program has not delivered strong outcomes for students. Student satisfaction, as evidenced by city school survey, has declined over time, and the schools had challenges in establishing a positive climate for teaching and learning. Enrollment has also declined within the school, and there are more middle and high school seats than needed in this part of the city. So based on the considerations of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMAR factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the Friendship Academy of Engineering and Technology close effective 2018.
I concur with the recommendations as stated.
Do Board members have any questions as to the merits of the recommendation? Commissioner Highcupboard, do we have a motion?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued November 14th, testimony given at the special session and public hearing, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMAR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Berkeley. All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Canem, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes 9 to 0.
Knowledge and Success Academy are also known as CASA. The recommendation is to close the program in summer 2018 and to retain the facility for future use. We do have larger programs that we are considering locating within the facility. The program has not delivered strong outcomes for students. Attendance has been declining. Enrollment has been too low to provide robust programming. And again, there are more secondary seats than are needed in this part of the city. Therefore, based on the consideration of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMAR factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that Knowledge and Success Academy close effective summer 2018.
I concur with the recommendations as stated.
Board members have any questions as to the merits of the proposal? Commissioner Canem?
That's the West Baltimore Building. So that's a... Right, CASA's in the West Baltimore?
CASA's in the Wallbrook Building.
Oh, CASA moves to the Wallbrook Building. That's right. Okay. Got you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Highcupboard, do we have a motion?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued on November 14th, testimony given at special session and public hearing, the contents of the official record and the eight COMAR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Canem, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes 9 to 0.
The next school we're going to talk about, Ragno Heights Elementary Middle School. This is pursuant to the 21st Century Plan. The recommendation is that the program close and that we surplus the building back to the city of Baltimore effective summer 2018. Ragno Heights was recommended under the 21st Century Building Plan due to enrollment trends in the area, which indicated an excess of elementary and middle grade seats. The nearby Lynnhurst Elementary Facility is being renovated for both school communities and is scheduled to open this fall, 2018. The merger of the school communities through the closure and surplus of Ragno Heights will give students in both communities access to a high-quality educational space. The Lynnhurst Zone will expand to serve all of the students who live between the combined communities. So based on the consideration of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the contents of the official record, the eight COMAR factors listed previously this evening, is the recommendation of the CEO that the Ragno Heights Elementary Middle School Program close effective summer 2018, that the Lynnhurst Elementary Middle School Zone be expanded to include the Ragno Heights Zone, and that city schools surplus the building effective summer 2018.
I concur with the recommendations as stated.
Do any Board members have questions as to the merits of this recommendation? Commissioner Highcupboard, can we have a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued on November 14th, testimony given at special session and public hearing, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMAR factors, that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Chinia, second. All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Canem, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes 9 to 0.
Okay. So next, we're going to talk about programs that are recommended for relocations. So first is the Blueford Drew Jameson STEM Academy West. The recommendation is to relocate the program to the Harlem Park Building in the summer 2018 and to retain the Wallbrook Building for future use. BDJ West is city school's only program offering an all-boys high school option. It is currently co-located in the Wallbrook Building with CASA, a program the Board just voted to close. So if that... Since that recommendation is... Has been approved, the Wallbrook Building would be significantly underutilized. This is important because the... In order for the district to be able to respond to emergency kind of facilities issues that would require capital dollars, you have to hit a certain utilization. So it really helps to have a safe space for students to be above that. And so leaving the BDJ and that large building... Wallbrook is probably our third largest... I want to say it's our third largest facility in the district. So it's an extremely large building. And BDJ is a small program. So to leave it alone in that building doesn't create an ideal space for students in terms of... Both in terms of being able to get improvement for capital projects requires 60% to 65% utilization, as well as from a staff perspective in terms of maintaining your eye on students when you're in a large space that is mostly underutilized. So for those reasons, and we... And wanted to ensure that the program stayed on the west side of the portfolio since the majority of students come from the west side of the city who attend the program. So the relocation of BDJ to co-locate with Augusta Fell Savage increases the utilization of Harlem Park. So it meets those things so we can respond to important emergencies that could pop up. Additionally, we are looking at larger programs that could more fully utilize the Wallbrook Facility and utilize the space. So... Based on the considerations of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the content of the official record, the eight COMAR factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the Blueford Drew Jameson STEM Academy West Program be relocated to the Harlem Park Building in the summer of 2018.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Do Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation? Commissioner Highcupboard?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued on November 14th, testimony given at special session and public hearings, the contents of the official record and the eight COMAR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Cooper? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Can't...
No, not Commissioners.
My bad. Commissioner Berkeley, Highcupboard, Canem, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Any opposed? Commissioner Hassan? Motion passes. Eight support, one against.
I just, too, want to say on the record that we really heard strongly from students and staff around their concerns, and we'll be engaging them immediately after... In the new year, to really address those concerns and have a plan around how we ensure safe travel and safe passage. That's a real thing. So I don't want people to walk away from this and feel like we weren't listening. We take that very seriously. And the safety of our students is utmost important. And so we will be working with the families and the students to address those concerns over a series of meetings in the new year. So I want that just to be really clear and on the record. So the next... We kind of talked about this a little bit. It's connected to the Coldstream vote. So the recommendation here is to relocate the Stadium School to the Coldstream Park Building in the summer of 2018. Stadium School is currently co-located with Abiston Elementary in the small elementary building. Both schools are valued by families but can't grow because of the space constraints of the facility. Since the Board has approved the Coldstream Park Elementary Program, we're asking that you approve this because it would allow Coldstream to grow in a building that's more conducive to a middle grades program.
Stadium.
I mean Stadium, sorry. Thank you. It would allow the Stadium School to grow in a building that's more conducive to a middle grades program. Thank you. So based on the considerations of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMAR factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the Stadium School Program be relocated to the Coldstream Park Building in the summer 2018. If the Board has approved the Coldstream recommendation, it will become a guaranteed middle school option for students in the new combined Abiston-Coldstream Zone.
I concur with the rec... Sorry. I concur with the recommendations as stated.
Do Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation? Commissioner Highcupboard?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued on November 14th, the testimony given at special session and public hearings, the content of the official record and the eight COMAR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated. the content of the official record and the eight co-mar factors that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Frank? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, and now we're going to talk about surplus buildings. So this slide shows that we're recommending Patapsco Building for a surplus with an effective date of 2018. It's located at 844 Roundview Road. So based on the considerations of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the content of the official record, and the eight co-mar factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the Patapsco Building be surplus to the city of Baltimore in summer 2018.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based on the consideration, the recommendation rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued on November 14th, the testimony given in special session and public hearings, the contents of the official record and the eight co-mar factors that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hassan? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, we're also recommending that the west side facility be surplus with effective date 2018. It's located at 2235 North Fulton Avenue. Based on the considerations of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the content of the official record, and the eight co-mar factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the west side building be surplus to the city of Baltimore in the summer of 2018.
I con, I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions from board members as to the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendation and rationale of the CEO, portfolio review report issued on November 14th, the testimony given in special session and public hearings, the contents of the official record and the eight co-mar factors that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Berkeley? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, and earlier in our slide noted four surplus, so two were part of the closure recommendations that happened earlier. They're noted on the slide if people are just counting and are confused, so it's noted on the slide. Now we're going to look at grade reconfigurations.
Angela, people couldn't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. If you look at the original slide that has a count and mentions four surplus votes, two of those you did with a closure recommendation earlier in our slide, so that was Dr. Carter G. Woodson, as well as Ragnar Heights. So it's just footnoted on the slide, so if you're counting, you can keep track of it.
Thank you. Much, much more helpful that time.
Sorry. Okay, so now we're going to look at grade recon, recommendations for graded reconfigurations. And so first is around Arlington Elementary School. We're asking that the board delay the removal of middle grades until 2019, 20. This actually is a request that came from the school community. They're asking for the delay. Per the 2014-15 Portfolio Review, the board had originally approved changing the grade configuration of Arlington to an elementary school starting next year, and the middle grade students were scheduled to go to Pimlico. Both Arlington and Pimlico are part of the 21st Century Plan, and they were supposed to open at the same time. Based on construction schedules, they're opening at different times. One's opening next year and the one in the following year. So the delay will allow time for both schools to prepare for that transition and the merger of middle grade students, so more academic planning can happen and more engagement with families around the new Pimlico. So it is the recommendation of the CEO that the 21st Century Plan be amended to delay the grade reconfiguration of Arlington Elementary Middle School until 2019, 20, when the school will change from serving students in pre-kindergarten through grade eight to pre-kindergarten through grade five.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation?
I move that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Second? Seconded by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, the next school they're going to talk about is New Era Academy. The recommendation is that it change from being a middle high to a high school only for the 2018-19 school year. New Era's had a small middle grades population for a number of years, and that impacts its ability to provide robust programming to both middle grade students and to high school students. Additionally, as part of the 21st Century Buildings Plan, middle grade students who live in that community will be zoned to the newly, newly renovated Cherry Hill, which opens this fall in September 2018. So the reconfiguration would allow New Era to focus on the unique needs of high school students and professional development for secondary teachers. Under this recommendation, middle grade students who live in the zone will be able to attend Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School. Students who do not live in the zone or students who opt to will be able to participate in school choice to identify a new school for the 2018-19 school year. So this is a recommendation of the CEO that New Era Academy's grade configuration be changed from grade six through 12 to a school that serves grades nine through 12 beginning in the school year 2018-19.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions from board members as to the merits of these recommendations?
I move that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hassan? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
And then, now we're going to look at amendments to the 21st Century Plan. The board previously already voted to surplus the Northwestern Building with an effective date of 2019. So this is an amendment, we're asking that they change that effective date to 2021. We need the facility longer for the swing space plan for 21st Century Buildings work. So it is a recommendation of the CEO that the 21st Century Buildings Plan be amended to change the surplus date of the Northwestern High School Building to the city from 2019 to 2021.
I'm sorry, I concur with the recommendation as stated, sorry about that.
That's okay. Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation?
I move that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Second? Commissioner Berkeley? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
And then, this is just here for informational purposes, it's like the footnote before. So the vote that you took earlier on Carter G. is also technically an amendment to the plan, so we wanted to cure, so when we look back, it's a clear, it's clear on the record what was done around the plan, so. One other kind of thing for informational purposes, and this is something that's in the CEO's discretion. So the Elmer A., the Elementary Middle Alternative Program is located in the Harlem Park Building with Augusta Falls. The board just took a vote to relocate the Blueford Drew Jameson STEM Academy to that facility. So we're going to move this program. It's not a school, it's a program that serves students who belong to other schools. And so they receive students from across the city. They focus on elementary students with behavioral concerns and a small population of middle grade students who are overage or undercredited. And so the CEO has taken action to move that program to the Elmer A. Henderson Portables, which are located in east Baltimore. There aren't a lot of transportation routes, so it makes it accessible to students who are coming from different parts of the city. So it's just here for information for the public.
Just make sure, Angela, that you're continuing to speak up.
Okay.
Even when we know, we all acknowledge that you have more in our heads than anybody else in this room, but you just want to make sure.
Protect, okay, sorry about that. Do I need to repeat anything here?
No, no, it's okay, so far so good, but we agree with her.
All right, now we're going to head into the operator renewal on recommendations. So operator renewal is governed by the board's policy IHB. It is a process that for operator schools is part of the life of those schools, and we look at their contracts every three to five years to assess what operators are providing to our students. IHB requires that we look at three key areas. Student achievement, school climate, and financial management and governance. Similar to the other side of the portfolio, there's been hearings and there's been the kind of, kind of a series of things that have happened to lead us to this point, including applications submitted by schools, renewal reports, a special session or work session that was for operators to testify to the board. The members of those communities could, had the opportunity to also participate in the other hearings and sessions that we have. Some took advantage of that, so today is the vote on the contracts for these operators. So the first school that we're going to look at is Afia Public Charter School. It's recommended for a five-year renewal. It's a middle grades charter school located in northeast Baltimore. They were highly effective in key areas like absolute performance around the math park for middle grade students and effective on English Language Arts for their middle grade students. They're also effective in the trend rating for both math and English. They were highly effective in effective instruction, which is based on our school effectiveness review, which looks at whether school staff are able to plan and deliver effective academic instruction to students and whether schools establish an environment in which teaching and learning can occur. There is a full renewal report that goes through every measure that can be found online for families and members of the public that are interested. It's also included in the complete portfolio book. So. Based on the operator renewal findings, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with the Afia Baltimore Inc. to operate Afia Public Charter School will be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends on June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions from board members on the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hassan, all in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations to Afia on their five-year renewal.
Next school that we're going to talk about is the Baltimore International Academy. It's also located in northeast Baltimore. The recommendation is for a five-year renewal. They were effective in academic performance and climate. They met expectations and were highly effective for financial management and governance. They're highly effective in the park for absolute math for their middle grades, effective in English Language Arts Park for middle grades, developing in math for elementary grades, and not effective in English Language Arts for elementary grades. They were highly effective in the effective instruction section of the school effectiveness review. They were highly effective in fidelity to charter, which looked at how, while the school communicates and implements its mission and vision, whether the school delivers high-quality programming to its students and uses data to identify and address achievement gaps and subgroup performance. And they were effective in student and family and staff satisfaction as evidenced by city schools' school survey. It is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with the Baltimore International Academy Incorporated to operate Baltimore International Academy be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation?
Okay, I move that based on the consideration, the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner High-Cover. All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations on your five-year renewal.
Okay, the next school that we're going to look at is Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women. They're more centrally located, they're a middle high school. They receive highly effective in academic performance, effective in climate, meets expectations, slash effective in financial management and governance. They were effective in college and career readiness measure, which measures participation, success, and important college preparate, preparation indicators, sorry, such as SAT, ACT, AP, and IB exams, college credit bearing coursework, and/or completion of the CTE pathway. We're also considerous college enrollment. They were highly effective in the four-year cohort grad rate with a 95% seniors graduating. They were highly effective in absolute park performance in math for middle grades, English Language Arts for middle grades, English Language Arts for our 10th graders, and effective in Algebra I. They were highly effective in talented people, an area from the school effectiveness review, which measures how a school selects, evaluates, and retains effective teachers. So it is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with the Foundation for the Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women Incorporated to operate Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions on the merits of the recommendation?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Bondima? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations to Bliss on the three, on the five-year renewal.
Okay. Now we're going to look at City Neighbors Charter School. They are located in northeast Baltimore. The recommendation is for a three-year renewal. They serve students in grade K-8. For academic performance, they receive the developing. For climate, they receive the highly effective. And for financial management slash governance, they receive the meets expectations slash effective. They were not effective in the absolute park performance in math for elementary grades and middle grades. And they were developing in park achievement growth, which assesses changes in student achievement over time for math in the middle grades and English Language Arts in elementary grades. And so it is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with City Neighbors Charter School Incorporated to operate City Neighbors Charter School be renewed for three years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends on June 30 of 2021.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions on the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner High-Cover. All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High-Cover, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
Creative City Public Charter School is located in west Baltimore. It's an elementary program. It's recommended for a three-year renewal. They receive the developing in academic performance, effective in climate, and meets expectations slash effective in financial management and governance. They were not effective in the absolute park performance for math in the elementary grades and English Language Arts. They were highly effective in vision engagement based on the school effectiveness review, which looks at a school's ability to provide a safe and supportive learning environment for students and families, teachers and staff. And they were highly effective in the parent and staff satisfaction and developing in student satisfaction as evidenced by city schools' survey. It is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Creative City Public Charter School Foundation Incorporated to operate Creative City Public Charter School be renewed for three years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018. for three years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends on June 30 of 2021.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation? Peter?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High Cupboard, Canham, Kashani Cooper, Chinia Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero.
Okay. The Crossroads School, which is located in southeast Baltimore, is a middle grades program. Recommendation is for a five-year renewal. They were effective in academic performance and climate. They met expectations and were highly effective in financial management and governance. They were highly effective in the absolute park performance and math for middle grades and English language arts. They were developing in park achievement growth. They were highly effective in the fidelity to charter, and they were highly effective in cohort retention, which measures the number of students who remain with a school at least two years after initial entry over time. It is a recommendation of CEO that the contract with Living Classrooms Foundation to operate the Crossroads School be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends on June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions as to the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Chinia, all in favor. Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High Cupboard, Canham, Kashani Cooper, Chinia Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations, Crossroads, on your five-year renewal.
The next school we're going to look at is Empowerment Academy. It's located in West Baltimore. They're recommended for a five-year renewal. They serve students in grades K through eight. They were effective in academic performance and climate, as well as financial management and governance. They were highly effective on the absolute park achievement in math for their elementary and middle grades, as well as they were also highly effective in English language arts and for both middle and elementary grades. They were highly effective in park achievement growth for middle grades and elementary grades and developing in math for elementary grades. They were highly effective in cohort retention, which measures the number of students who remain with a school at least two years after initial entry over time. It is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Empowerment Center Incorporated to operate Empowerment Academy be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends on June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions on the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based on the consideration and the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and the administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner High Cupboard, all in favor. Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High Cupboard, Canham, Kashani Cooper, Chinia Frank, Bondima. Motion pa... Are you... Let's try that again. Voting in favor of this motion are Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, High Cupboard, Canham, Kashani Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations to the Empowerment Academy on your five-year renewal.
Okay. The next school that we're going to talk about is Hampstead Hill Academy. They're also located in southeast Baltimore. They serve students in grades K through eight. They're recommended for a five-year renewal. They were highly effective in every category, academic performance, climate, and financial management and governance. They were highly effective in the absolute park and English language arts for elementary students, for math students in the middle grades. They were effective in math for elementary and for English language arts in the middle grades. They were highly effective in parent, student, staff satisfaction as evidenced by City Schools' school survey. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with the Baltimore Curriculum Project Incorporated to operate Hampstead Hill Academy be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends on June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions on the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Can't second, Jerome.
I moved it. Sorry, I'm so excited. I wanted to second it, too.
Seconded by Commissioner Frank, all in favor. Commissioners Berkeley...
Oh, no, she's out.
Got it. Commissioners Hassan, High Cupboard, Canham, Kashani Cooper, Chinia Frank, Bondima, all opposed. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Eight approve, no oppose, and one abstention.
Okay. The next school...
Thank you. Congratulations to Hampstead Hill on your five-year renewal.
Sorry. The next school we're going to talk about is the Independent School Local One High. Before I get into the details here, there's one thing I want to correct on the record. It's a notice was given to the board, to the charter and operator-led advisory board, and to the school, and I just want to publicly acknowledge this here. So in the original portfolio report, staff had incorrectly counted the number of three-year renewals the school had previously. So the school only had one three-year renewal. At the time that the school opened, the original charter contract was for three years, so that was accidentally counted in that count, which led to that error. So it's been updated on the report and reflected on the website and has been footnoted appropriately. It doesn't impact any of the ratings here. It's not a consideration around the ratings and has not resulted in a change in the recommendation. So this school is currently temporarily located in West Baltimore in the Lemelle facility, is a charter, school-serving, students in high school, is recommended for a non-renewal. The school received developing in each of the categories, academic performance, climate, and financial management and governance. They met expectations in the financial management section. The school received a not effective in college and career readiness measure, which measures participation in success and important college preparation, I don't know, indicators such as SAT, ACT, AP, and IB exams, and college credit bearing coursework, as well as completion of a CTE pathway. It also considers college enrollment within 16 months of graduation. The school is rated not effective in the four-year cohort grad rate with a graduation rate of 66.7% for seniors for the cohort that graduated in 15, 16. They were highly effective in the absolute park achievement on English language arts for grade 10, developing in Algebra I. And they were developing on strategic leadership and measurement based on the school effectiveness review. Based on the operator renewal findings, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Baltimore Teacher Network to operate Independent School Local One High not be renewed and that the school be closed at the conclusion of the current contract on June 30 of 2018.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions on the merits of this recommendation? Commissioner High Cupboard?
So based on the testimony that the students gave, I'm not comfortable with this recommendation. I feel like they made a very clear case for a place where students who have severe anxiety want to be. I agree, and I understand the concerns that are outlined in the report and acknowledging that we have given a three-year renewal before to schools that have had all developings. I would ask to consider a one-year pause on this one. They've been pointed out the concerns that we have as part of the renewal process and give them a chance to address the concerns because I don't know where else those kids would be comfortable and be happy to be. And I just was really compelled by the number of kids and what they said and the parents during their testimony about the school.
Mr. Canham?
Yeah, I'm very torn on this recommendation because I visited the school and have been looking at it pretty closely, and I think the academics need a huge lift. And I know the kids are feeling... The kid's testimony, the student's testimony was very compelling, that they have a safe environment. But the question is, is it just a safe environment? How can we get them to excel academically? And I was really concerned about the academics overall, but then the special ed results over the last couple of years, as well as the chronic absenteeism rate. And so I guess I'm just really torn because while I want our students to have a place, a safe place to learn, I'm very, I'm struggling. And I guess, I guess the question to staff is, do you think things can be put in place academically to kind of put the school back on track in a year?
Yeah. So to kind of second what Commissioner Hubbard said, in cases like this where we see developing, the board has gone either way. I think, you know, there are real concerns that led to the recommendation that originated with the charter and operator-led advisory board's recommendation and has become the CEO's recommendation. So there are real concerns there, but I can also see a case for keeping this school. It's kind of, it's up to you about whether, what you think makes sense. And so, you know, we have schools that have received a three-year renewal, that have had developing in each of the categories, that have been able to turn it around, and we have schools that haven't, and you've closed. So it's kind of put the ball back in your court.
Commissioner Bondima, then Commissioner Frank.
Thank you very much. I am, thank you. I also am very concerned about this school. I was very touched and emotionally touched when I heard many of the students speak. And I have to say, I'm on this board because I am a community person and came from a community such as that community. And we can, our students can be successful coming from that community. We have to listen to our community sometime. I am all for the fact of giving these students, faculty, students another opportunity and hope that we can give them one year and hope that something can occur one year. But I want the students to realize that we, we're taking a chance with them. We're giving them an opportunity. That's what my hope is. But I was extremely touched and emotionally touched listening to the parents and the students who came out and sat in the audience and was willing to come up and speak. And that's what we sometimes have to listen to, different sides to the story. So we have to sometimes listen to both sides, and my preference is to give them another chance.
Commissioner Frank?
Thanks. I, I share the concerns of the commissioners who have spoken. I want to translate that concern, though, into a question for, for staff. What we heard from parents, grandparents, and very courageous students who came and spoke about their own disabilities and the fact that they really didn't fit in elsewhere and they weren't participating elsewhere. What, what do you do in a situation like this? We're not talking about hundreds of kids. We're talking about 130. I think a subset of that really spoke to the special place that this is. I imagine others might find a new home easier than those that, that won't. So assume that there's a subset of 130 or so kids from, from independents that are going to find it difficult to, to move to another school in a different setting, with larger classes, with different kinds of supports. So what do we say to those parents and kids about what we'll do if this school does close?
So, I mean, independence is definitely a unique program in terms of its size. We don't have another high school program that is as small as independence is. So that's something that you need to think about. If the board accepts the recommendation as stated, staff and enrollment and choice and transfers will meet individually with families to help them find another setting. But again, you have to wrestle with, it is very unique in terms of how small the program is.
Commissioner Chinia?
Yeah, I too have the same concerns and am torn as other people are. However, if, if I were to vote in, in favor of a one-year, I don't know what to call it, probationary period, I think there's some very specific things that would need to happen. And, and, and they've been mentioned, but I just want to put it on record in terms of academic leadership, in terms of the special education program, and in terms of a very specific plan around academics themselves, the instruction. I, I think we really have to see some, some, some clear-cut things that are happening in those three areas.
So can I, am I allowed to just comment or no?
Commissioner High Cupboard?
I just wanted to add governance to that. You mentioned a list that I, I was going to say that, but thank you for saying it. I would add just where they recognize the, the concerns around governance and how they're going to improve that.
I'd like to add if we are identifying areas of improvement, attendance and chronic attend, or absenteeism and chronic absenteeism as well.
Commissioner Cooper?
Two points. One, I know that we've done one-year extension renewals, whichever term we use. I'm trying to think of when one has actually been successful and the school has not ultimately closed. That's one question I have. Second, my board docs are sticking on me, so I can't get to the document that I read with the information that basically outlined why this school needed to be closed. And from the information I read, one year would not do anything. It would be us dragging this out unnecessarily. So I would not vote for one-year extension. I would not support it.
I think I fall someplace in between the, all of this. The caution I feel is feeling very aware that there is a set of students who have said to us on every chance they were given that they didn't feel like there was another place for them. So that point's been made and heard. I also think, though, that when we look at the size of this school, with everything we've been saying about what's manageable in our portfolio, that this is shaky ground to think that we can effectively run a high school sustainably with this few students. So that's the other point that's sticking in my head. So we'll entertain a motion in a few minutes here, but I think that it's worth for Dr. Santelisus, Sean, others in the academic team to think about over time, I'm not saying now, what, what else do we have to do looking inside of our overall portfolio that could address the needs of these young people? I, I find it very, again, shaky ground that for a subset of our students who are clearly talented, I mean, there you couldn't, there's no debate on that from what we've observed and heard. But they're telling us that there is no other place for them, so that, that has to be heard. So if we close the school, whether, whatever the time, if we close the school, we, we have to have a place for those kids. If we don't have it now, that's a huge problem. But even if we keep it open, it's a, that's a, hard to imagine that we can sustain for, in this way, for very long. So the, the system has to think about how we address those, the, the needs that have been brought forward to us.
Commissioner Frank?
Question, what is the approved capacity of this school?
Can you pull that? You got it, 150?
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Hassan, then, High Cupboard?
So I just, I wanted to comment on the, the students coming to present because a lot of schools have brought students to present. I think the difference for me with independents was, for lack of a better metaphor, they could go so deep in their bench and still have, you know, clearly articulate children who are passionate beyond sort of the emotional plea of this is my family, but could give some real evidence. And I'd also just like to remind the board, unless I'm incorrect, Angela, correct me here if I'm wrong, that there's a new principle in place as of last year that the, the community seemed to have a great deal of confidence in, so that there may be the, the internal support and leadership.
I don't think that's true.
Is it?
I think he's starting, I think he's in his-
Starting the second, okay.
Second year, yeah.
Either way, it's, it's hard to turn around on a dime in a year. So, as it will be to Commissioner Cooper's point, in the next year.
Commissioner Hike Hubbard?
And I appreciate what you just said, Commissioner Kashani, about the system, you need to think about what places we have for what kids. I want to reiterate, though, there was something that was said in the testimony by the school about the district needing to flag for them earlier the concerns that we have. And I want to make it very clear, that is not our responsibility. The school has responsibility to think about what it's doing and how it's serving its kids, and to monitor itself. And as such, if we do decide to do a one-year, it is the school's responsibility to fix it. I know you didn't say that. I just want to make sure no one interprets that it's the district's responsibility to support their academic plan, or their leadership plan, or their whatever. It's the, you didn't say that. I'm reiterating that to the group, that it is their responsibility, if we give them this year to sort of think that through and figure this out, they have to fix it themselves. It's part of the charter and district relationship. It is on them to sort of acknowledge where their concerns are and to fix their concerns. And I think that there's, there's merit in them being part of our district portfolio, but it's their responsibility to sort of figure that out.
I appreciate you clarifying that point. It, it is a hallmark of the charter, our agreement, contracts with charters, that we don't do that. And just to make sure I do clarify my point, separate and apart from what we do in, in this small school, there is clearly a need in this district for support for students with these kinds of needs. And I think that the district system has to think about that and figure that out, separate and apart from what we end up doing here.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, a question.
Commissioner Canham, and then Commissioner Frank?
We, if we were going to entertain a one-year, when does the year start? Is it this time next year decisions being made, or is it through the academic year of next year?
Yeah, so if you do a one-year, that means that this time next year, you'll be making a decision again. That they'll, they'll be up for renewal almost immediately following this process. And so that's kind of, there, there's a challenge. If you do a one-year, you're not likely going to be able to have new data. It would be more around soft kind of measures, around practices. That's, but again, we'll be immediately back into a renewal kind of situation.
I think that Dr. Santalisis' thoughts around, and you should correct me if I have anything wrong, but in terms of how to do a one-year would involve the school themselves identifying metrics, milestones along the way, various, like, because Angela's right, there would not be a lot of more hard data. There would not be a lot more in the way of test scores for us to look at at that point. So it would be having the school community themselves think about, identify some of their challenges, and identify their academic plan for addressing those challenges, as well as coming up with the metrics and the benchmarks that we should be gauging along the way between now and next year, so that, or we or frankly, some outside contractor could be doing between now and through that year to give us a sense of where we are next year. So, and again, putting the responsibility, I agree with Commissioner Hike Hubbard, on the school for identifying what, what the metrics should be, and then how to measure them.
But the, the CEO would need to be able to approve that plan. And the, the metrics would have to be, you know, clearly defined with a clearer timeline, as well as approving the vendor, whoever would review their progress to, including their contract towards those metrics, to make sure that there is a thorough overview of progress towards those metrics.
I think Commissioner Frank has another question, and then I want to ask Dr. Santalisis to say a few words on this.
Yeah, actually, that bright line that you described, Commissioner Hike Hubbard, didn't occur to me. What you're, I think you're saying, and what I think I'm hearing, is that the responsibility for identifying the benchmarks and whatever will be put in place to achieve those benchmarks is, is the board of the school and its, its leadership. I feel less confident, if that is the case, and if that's the precedent that, that we have set, and if that's a bright line we don't want to follow. I feel less confident in the school's ability to do that on its own, or with a consultant. But I think what I heard you say, Angela, is that whatever they come up with ultimately would have to be approved by the district. So the district would ultimately determine if the growth, if the measures and the metrics that are put in place would be approved by the CEO, and then ultimately measured against those metrics. But the CEO may disagree with the metrics, and ultimately, there could be some back and forth. We, we, obviously, we need to, this is judgment at the end of the day, but we don't, we only achieve low metrics. We ultimately have to make a judgment about whether these are, okay, so.
That's correct.
And Andy, just the one thing you said, about something about a precedent, it's not about setting a precedent. It really is about, these are schools for which we have a contract and, and in exchange for additional flexibility on a whole range of things, they have, you know, a responsibility and accountability. So it's not like we're setting a precedent, it's just we're literally honoring a contract, in terms of them having the responsibility.
If, if I can, just to be clear, the renewal process-
Just talking about the uniqueness of the charter contract.
Sorry.
I'm just, I'm, I'm merely, yes, everything we do is a precedent, but in the way he said it, it's not like, this is not a new thing for us to honor a charter contract. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so the, like, the renewal process itself, the measures that we use become part of the contract. We engage annually operators around any changes we make to that process, so it's predictable how we're going to measure you. So the point that I think is being made is that operators themselves should be measuring themselves against those metrics.
Okay, I want to ask Dr. Santalisis to say a few words on this.
So a few things. One, with regards to the question about metrics, I think that we can all acknowledge that within a year, there would need to be the identification of new, what I would call indicators of growth metrics, that are going to be more process-based. And I think we should all name that publicly. We should, we should name that we are going to be, if the board votes for some kind of year extension, that that is going to be part of this. We are not going to magically look at these same indicators in the same way. So that's number one. Number two, I will say that I believe that the process and my understanding of even how the board is discussing it now, in no way, shape, or form, means that I abdicate any of my responsibilities, the chief executive officer of Baltimore City Public Schools, to set the instructional academic standard for all schools. It also means that as part of that process, I have no intention of abdicating the identification of the metrics on which this school, or any school, in any kind of interim period, is left to its own devices to set what the benchmarks are for Baltimore City Public School students. To support or to kind of give commentary to what Commissioner Hike Hubbard referenced, I think is an important distinction, and that is the responsibility of the operator to be able to monitor and solicit feedback. It is part of the contract that we have with those who choose to operate schools. And that part of that responsibility includes being able to solicit feedback, benchmark progress, and to be able to communicate around areas where there might be additional need, some of which might be met by the school district, if it's in consultation, and there is frankly, a consultation contract set up around that. And, or to solicit that which other schools with operators get in other places. There's, there's no requirement to come to the district for that. But I want to be clear, and, and again, I, I'm saying this because I believe very strongly, I have the board's support on this, but I want to be clear for the public, I'm not sitting in this seat to abdicate responsibility for the performance of any young person who sits within the city limits that is Baltimore City Public Schools. And then finally, what I will say is that I too, as well as staff, also heard very, very clearly what I think is rightly noted by members of the board, that we need more schooling options for young people who suffer from, or who are challenged with, right, things like anxiety disorder, right? And we have to acknowledge, which we did, and it will inform our portfolio process as we move forward. I said in a luncheon earlier today that one of the things that we as public schools need to do a better job with is providing more tailored, differentiated options, because kids are different, and they need different things. I will also note that we have to do it within the fiscal constraints that we have as a school district. And we have to do it in a way, right, that we can systematically, right, and deliberately, and soundly address the needs of their students without undermining the fiscal responsibility that the public has entrusted us in. And then finally, I will say, right, both as a parent and the CEO, and I said to a reporter earlier today, I know it's not chic to do it, but I don't separate the two. And I will say this, that there is no disorder, there is no challenge that students face that supersedes our responsibility to educate them to high levels. And so it is not sufficient, in a public academic institution that is charged by the public, to educate all young people to be college and career-ready, to bypass that responsibility and default based on a young person's challenge, disability, or zip code. And so that, with whatever vote the board takes this evening, again, will never cease to be the charge of this public school system, and certainly not while I am sitting as CEO. It will always be about the ultimate performance and preparation for the young people of Baltimore City, to excel, and to be able to be prepared and maximize their gifts. So that's my only point of clarity, Board Chair Kashani. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Seeing that there are no other questions, I'd ask for Peter to make a motion.
Yep. I move that based on the consideration, the recommendations, and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA, that the board reject the CEO's recommendation and modify it in the following manner. I move to amend the CEO's recommendation so that the contract with the Baltimore Teacher Network to run independent school Local One High is conditionally renewed for one year based on benchmarks set and reviewed by the CEO.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Hike Hubbard. All in favor of the motion? Commissioners Hike Hubbard, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima, all opposed. Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Cooper, motion passes six-three. We just approved a one-year conditional for independence.
Okay. The next school that we're going to talk about is Midtown Academy. Midtown received, Midtown's located in Midtown, it serves students in grades K through eight. They're recommended for a five-year renewal. They received highly effective in academic performance and climate. They met expectations and were effective in financial management and governance, highly effective in the absolute park achievement in English Language Arts for students in grades three through five, as well as math in grade three through five. And they were effective in, in the park for middle grades, students in English Language Arts and Math. They were also highly effective in fidelity to charter, which looks at how well the school communicates and implements its mission and vision, and whether the school delivers high-quality programming to its students, and uses data to identify and address the achievement gaps in subgroup performance. They were also highly effective in parent, student, and staff satisfaction, as evidenced by the city school's school survey. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Midtown Academy Incorporated, Incorporated, to operate Midtown Academy be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends on June 30th, 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions by the board as to the merits of this recommendation? Peter?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and administrative regulation IHBRA, that the board accept the CEO's recommendations as stated.
Do you have a second? Second by Commissioner Hike Hubbard, all in favor. Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Hike Hubbard, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima, eight approve, one absent. Motion passes. Eight and one absent. Congratulations to Midtown Academy on the five-year renewal.
So the next school is Patterson Park Public Charter School. Patterson Park Public Charter School is located in southeast Baltimore, is recommended for a five-year renewal. They serve students in grades K through eight. They were highly effective in both academic performance and climate, and they met expectations and were effective in financial management and governance. They were highly effective in the absolute park achievement in English Language Arts for elementary grades, highly effective in, in the park for math for elementary grades and middle grades. They were effective for the park for middle grades. They were highly effective in parent, staff, and student satisfaction, as evidenced by the city school's school survey. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Patterson Park Public Charter School Incorporated, to operate Patterson Park Public Charter School be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends June 30th, 2023.
I concur with the recommendation.
Do board members-
As stated, sorry.
This should be easier than it is. Do board members have any questions on the merits of the recommendation?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in the policy IHB and the administrative regulation IHBRA, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Moved by Commissioner Canham, seconded by Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Hike Hubbard, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima, motion passes eight with one absent. And congratulations to Patterson Park Public Charter School and their five-year renewal.
Okay, and then the final school for tonight, and we're going to talk about Southwest Baltimore Charter School. It's located in southwest Baltimore. They serve students in grades K through eight. They're recommended for a three-year renewal. They received a developing in the academic section, and effective in climate, meets expectations slash effective in financial management and governance. They were effective on the absolute park in English Language Arts for elementary grades, as well as in the math for elementary grades. They were not effective in the park for middle-grade students for both English and math. They were effective in cohort retention, which means the number of students who remain with a school for at least two years after initial cohort over time. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Southwest Baltimore Charter School Incorporated, to operate Southwest Baltimore Charter School, be renewed for three years for a term that commences on July 1, 2018, and ends June 30th, 2021.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Board members have any questions about the merits of this recommendation?
I move that based on, upon the, I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHB and the administrative regulation IHBRA, that the board accept the CEO's recommendations as stated.
Seconded by Commissioner Hike Hubbard. Do you, okay, I was going to say, do you have a question? All in favor? Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Hike Hubbard, Canham, Kashani, Cooper, Chinia, Frank, Bondima, motion passes nine-zero. That concludes our voting on the, on the portfolio review. I want to, once again, thank everybody for their participation in this process. If this seems easy from this end, it's not. We appreciate everything that everybody, all the time and effort everybody put in. And I want to say a special thank you to Angela Alvarez. We know how much time and effort you put into this. And of course, your staff, because we know they're awesome too. But, so thank you very much. I just want to remind people of some upcoming, of the upcoming meetings. This is the last, well, we, this is the last board meeting or committee meeting for this year. The next set of meetings, there's an executive session on January 9th at 3:00. The next public board meeting is on January 9th at 6:00. The operations committee with its newly-elected chair, Commissioner Bondima, that just was elected this morning, will be on Tuesday, January 16th at 10:00 a.m. Policy committee will meet again on January 16th at 3:30. There's a board, board- There's a board, board forum on the school police policy in this room on Wednesday, January 17 at 6:00. And the next teaching and learning committee is on Tuesday, January 24 at 9:00. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the meeting? Moved by-
You gotta have Marnell's second.
You know, Marnell, so, before I close the meeting-
Second, let's go.
This is the last board meeting for Commissioners Ike Hubbard and Cooper. We're going to acknowledge them and thank them and recognize them in January, but let's just note, so let's do that again. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ike Hubbard, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, all in favor? Aye. Everybody approves closing this meeting.
That's an eight-zero vote.
Eight, nine-zero.
Eight-zero. Andy Frank isn't here.
Eight-eight-zero.